All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Wednesday, May 22nd, 2024 meeting for the Douglas Plan Board to order. Time is 7:00 PM. First item, we're just going to go around the table for the minute taker for attendance. Jacob Schultzberg here.
Meg Schlesman here.
Aaron Sook around here.
Mike DeRose here.
Jake Gennett here.
Mike Greco here.
Mike Switzer here.
Matthew Benoit here.
And Ernie Max, uh, Mark's absent, excused, and don't know about Mr. Frest. There are no A and Rs. And public hearing, 7:00 PM, public hearing continued for Davis Street Realty. Application for site plan review, SPR-240305, industrial building, 140 Davis Street, possible votes.
Mark Allen.
Mr. Allen, you want to bring it up? Allen Engineering, can everybody hear me in the room?
Yes.
Great. Again, 140 Davis Street, continued public hearing for Ed O'Leary, O'Leary Welding. Since we last spoke, we had a good back and forth with Graves Engineering. They had asked for some clarification and provisions. We had supplied those to you. And we believe now that all of the technical items have been addressed for this board. So there were a couple of minor drainage slopes that needed to be adjusted. We did that for you, and you have everything in front of you now. So if there's any other questions that the board may have, we're more than happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Benoit.
Sure. So we got an email from Jeff Walsh today, and we spoke with Mark Allen. We had a three-way call today to go over his remaining questions. Unfortunately, he was unable to be here tonight, so he gave me an email serving as his letter to sign off on the project. I circulated this to the members also. Says, Madam, satisfied with Mark's latest revisions documented by the May 20th plan revisions, drainage analysis revision addressed in comment number 31 of his May 16th review letter. He agrees with Mark that two pipes are adequately sized at 12-inch diameter. During his review, did note that these latest plans show a larger coltech system than previously proposed. He had no issue with the revisions made in this modification. He also noted that the latest plans on an earlier plan revision that water on the ground around CB number three, the lowest catch basin grate in the rear drainage system, could be impounded to elevation 43 or about 1 and 1/2 feet above catch basin grate. This empowerment is more than adequate to contain the short-term surcharge in the May 2024 documents during a 100-year storm at the water surface during the surcharge even rises out of the drainage system and out to the ground around drainage manhole number one. Please accept this email. It's a follow-up letter for his, to his May 16th review letter. So he seems to be satisfied with all the items.
Yeah, I know a pending item was the possibility of needing or not needing a earth removal permit.
Right. So we got an opinion from town council who does support Graves Engineering's request that they do need an earth removal permit.
Okay. Mr. Allen, are you willing to apply for that?
Yeah, so we're just waiting for Mr. O'Leary to give us the go-ahead to apply for that. I think he needs a little more clarification. I haven't spoken to Ed directly. I don't know if he's there in the room tonight, but he may be able to answer that as well.
Okay. He is not. All right. So board, any questions, comments, or concerns for the site plan?
How many asked, they say that they might be moving?
There was 2,000 cubic yards.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, it's down to, it's down to about 20,000 now with the new drainage scheme and the tighter bond below.
May I ask a question through the chair?
Yes.
Mark, does your revised plans also include comments from the peer review consultant through the Conservation Commission?
They do, yeah. So we were able to, yeah, I apologize. We met with the Conservation since we last met, and they have, she had a series of five or six items that she would like to see in the plans. They related a lot to the finished surface and the seed mixes of the various types of surface treatment around the drainage basins and the buffer zone areas. All of those notes have been added. And we also, on the erosion and control sheet, have added some comments that came of the last Conservation meeting regarding construction sequencing and intermittent siltation controls and not excavating out the drainage basins during the construction and only until you actually, we're going to actually build the drainage basins so that we don't, you know, over-sentiment them during construction. So all of those components have been worked into that set that you have in front of you.
Anyone else from the board? This is a public hearing. Anyone have any comments, questions, or concerns with 140 Davis Street site plan review in the audience or online? Seeing as none?
All right. I do have a draft decision that I circulated to the members in advance. I don't know if anyone had a chance to check it out. It's not in your packets tonight, but it did go out digitally. If anyone had any questions or comments, the one item that I added was that the applicant must obtain an earth removal permit prior to commencing construction on this project. Failure to obtain an earth removal permit will render this permit null and void. I wanted to put a timeline on that if the board was interested, to put a one-year or a two-year time to obtain the earth removal permit.
Through the chair, can I ask? What does it all mean? I mean, why are we asking for it if it isn't till after the fact? I mean, what is, what's the, what's the directive? What is the mechanisms of that?
I mean, these should have been filed concurrently, but this one's, this one's now, unfortunately.
What does it take to get, to do the earth removal permit? Is it a matter of a week? A couple of weeks? Calculations? Filing? Application? I mean, what is?
Question for the engineer, I guess.
Yeah, it's probably, probably about a four or five-week process to get all the butter notifications, the legal ads, and all that good stuff. So it's a little at a time.
You've already missed the deadline for the June meeting. Deadline was yesterday.
Yeah. I mean, we're, I mean, it's all fine and good. What happens if the earth removal permit is not approved and they've started? I'm all for them. They, I know the business. I love their business. They're a great, great company. But, you know, we want to dot our i's and cross our t's and not have anything after the fact, stop them, you know, and want them to go, go, go. But please advise. I mean, I just want to do the right thing.
Right. So this, this condition would make it so that the earth removal permit needs to be secured and recorded before, before they can start construction?
What could it be? Of two months? Oh, before construction?
Right.
They can't do any?
Right.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
It kind of, it's at a standstill until they get the earth.
Do you want to put a timeline for them to obtain the earth removal permit?
Let me ask through the chair. I made to Mr. Allen, what might he be looking for? One year? That's efficient? For earth removal?
That seems, yeah, that seems fair.
So let's keep it then. I'll make it one year.
One year.
Seems fair with Mr. Allen.
Mr. Flansburgh, you have a question for this?
I do, sir. 63 Monroe Street, Jeremy Flansburgh. Will there be a bond required?
This project? This is not something that we've asked for a bond on, no?
No, as of right now, no.
There might be something you might want to consider. We've had enough, just enough abandoned sand pits on, on this side of town. And yes, it is affecting my property value.
Thank you for your comment. Well, well.
How does the board feel?
Bond for restoration or?
If the building isn't built.
If I may.
I don't know how, yeah. Let me ask you this, the legality of the fact that this is a private landowner with his own land, building his own building. So in reality, you can pull an earth removal permit just to move the dirt because it's his land. He's pulled a permit. As long as the garbage and the earth removal is, if it's not to be used, it's reseeded in a loom like any earth removal that we have.
So that might be maybe something more for the earth removal.
Right.
Decision.
Right.
Agreed.
More than anything else.
Yeah.
I mean, if they decide not to build, it's their choice, his choice. But I understand, so we do with every earth removal where the land is to be reseeded if it's just, you know, remove the gravel and that's it.
Yeah.
Yes, Mike.
Normal process.
I think we should address the possibility of any bond with the earth removal. If, because that's a stipulation, a requirement of any breaking ground there. So they get that approval, and if they were to go in and just pull out all the soil, send it wherever it's going to go, and then something happens, you know, God knows what, and it never gets finished, well, then, yeah, something needs to be done to kind of keep it from becoming a dust bowl. But beyond, you know, just, I don't think you can require full restoration to ask, you know, prior. We just got to look at, you know, what you can do to keep it so that it's kind of sealed.
Sounds like something to consider for the earth removal when that comes across our table.
That sounds like the proper avenue. I think this site plan application is standalone on, you know, utilities, access, parking spaces, zoning conformance, building heights, material types.
Yeah. Did, follow-up, Jim?
Yes, sir. I don't think it's addressing dust. I spent $900 to power wash my house. I got dust on the other side on, across Route 16 at the town owns, and all this stuff going on down the street, which is another topic that we're going to get into. You'd be surprised. I opened my gas grill tonight, and it's dust all over. Not dust, but sand dust. And quite frankly, all these people that put up these buildings and do all this excavation, they're not good neighbors, and I want to be a good neighbor. And all my property value is going down the tubes. I got a pot shop, and my backyard looks like Fenway Park every night, all right? And I get dust. I opened just a cook, a hamburger, and I got dust all over the place of sand dust. Something's going to be done. Now, I noticed that they put that on the corner of, what is it? Regency Place or whatever. You guys gave him that. And I don't see any, any sort of buffer or, or trees being planted. It's like, you come down Route 16, it's like, welcome to Douglas, the dump of, of the central Massachusetts. I don't think this is good planning.
It's all zoned for what we're looking at, so.
Yeah. So as far as the dust and the open dirt operation with the earth removal, this isn't the earth removal public hearing.
I know it is.
So it's for the site plan review. And they have landscaping and paving plans, if approved, that they'd have to abide by.
But you guys never seem to require it.
Yeah. As part of earth removal, there's always a condition for dust, dust control. They have to.
It's evident. You can see it right there, right at the end, at the corner of Regency Place and Davis Street.
All right. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
All right, board. Yes, what would we be looking into at this point?
Be looking to motion to close public hearing.
Yep.
Any other comments?
I'm just curious, before we close it, about the, any conditions. Mr. Allen, have you got a chance to see the draft decision? If there's any issues on your end?
We did, and, yeah, we did, or I did. I took a look at them. I think there was one typo that you meant, you fixed, I think, in item number 21-ish, and I think after that change, it looks fairly standard and acceptable to me at least. I haven't heard from Ed.
One thing that's similar, learned from the past, is what do we want to do for a possible top coat or anything else that doesn't get done? You know, you know, I'm getting at, if we approve it and someone's not done in the meantime.
Right. The only thing is, last time, the occupancy permit was given.
Yes.
So a condition where occupancy permit is held until everything is met according to the print.
Yeah, there's a condition on that.
Is it?
Is that?
Yeah, so I want to run into issues, yeah.
Yep. I mean, that's the only way that I could think of wording it type deal, if that's.
Do you think you can draft up a?
Yeah, yeah. To the board, I mean.
Language, one of that, something like that for, in the decision?
Sure. I did put construction hours in here. The construction hours, not before 7:00 AM nor continue past 5:00 AM, Monday through Friday.
5:00 PM.
Right, 5:00 PM, sorry. Or before 8:00 AM nor past 1:00 PM on Saturdays. No Sundays or holidays. The holidays are listed. Equipment may be started between November 15th and April 1st. Equipment may be started at 6:30 AM, but construction cannot commence until 7:00 AM, as standard from one of the other decisions that we did. I can add that this, it's usually in here, something that says this.
To the chair, I think it was something I've discussed and brought up that we wanted to definitely start to implement on any of these projects moving forward. I don't know if we ever made to change the general format, but I mean, I think to eliminate issues like we've had in the past years, that that should be done.
Yeah, it was done in good faith, but it wasn't reciprocal.
Unfortunately.
So, yeah. All right, so at that point, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for 140 Davis Street.
Through the chair, with the addition of Mr. Allen, we understand what we're saying, right?
Yeah.
So moved. Okay. Okay. You were looking for a motion?
Yep, to close the public.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Greco, second by Mr. Switzer. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed, and.
Looking for a motion to issue, sorry, a motion to approve the site plan review permit for 140 Davis Street with conditions.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Switzer, second by Mr. DeRose. Any further discussion?
Through the chair, can you just review the conditions again?
There's 30 of them. I'd like you to.
Thank you.
Sorry, there's 15.
15?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. Conditions, term applicant shall refer to the current applicant and its assignees, successors, affiliates, subsidiaries, and other entity related thereto. Any sale, transfer, or assignment of the permit or any other assignment of the permit to the mortgagie pursuant to financing. Any sale or more than 50% of the assets interest in the applicant shall require board approval. Such approval not to be unreasonably withheld. That's condition number one. Condition two, the applicant must obtain earth removal special permit within one year of this decision prior to commencing construction of this project. Failure to obtain earth removal permit will render this permit null and void. This permit shall expire if construction is not commenced within three years from the date. It is filed by the board with the town clerk unless an extension is granted by the board to a date to be determined. Would you like me to keep going?
No, just to make sure that those couple items are in there, that's fine.
Yep, those are on there. And then the rest of them are very standard conditions.
Hours of operation.
Yep, hours of operation. I mentioned those already. Utilize the site egress as shown on the plan to access the site. Ensure safe, convenient vehicular access. Board member representatives permitted access to the project site prior to commencement of activities associated with projects. The name of the general contract or site form and company address, phone number, and email addressed to the planning board or the board of health. Applicant may with the planning agent in view to propose construction schedule and Encourage to maintain communication with planning agent. Encourage to communicate changes in activity. Planning board is aware of site activity. There's also noise. Applicants should implement measures to ensure noise does not exceed acceptable levels set forth by federal and state regulatory agencies. Cease any excessively loud activities when directed by the planning agent. No excessive loud activities are permitted prior to 8:00 AM or after 5:00 PM. Those are the construction hours. Yep, applicants shall implement necessary controls to ensure that vibration does not create a nuisance or hazard for property butters. Traffic, applicants shall implement necessary traffic safety controls to ensure safe and convenient vehicular access in and around the site. Any traffic issues that occur as a result of site operations and construction shall be mitigated immediately, expense of the applicant. It's like if they need equipment loading and they need to get a detail or whatever. And complaints related shall be logged and tracked by the planning agent. Assume that's me. Complaints will be brought to the attention of the board as necessary. Complaints that are found to be repetitive in nature, continuing with no mitigation in the opinion of the board, may constitute a violation of these conditions and may be grounds for stop order or partial stop work order. Stumps that are encountered created from the site construction activities shall be removed from the ground and ultimately removed from the site. Burial of any stumps in or the woods debris on-site is strictly forbidden after facility construction is completed, but prior to issuance of an occupancy permit, a site walk shall be organized with the town and safety personnel to familiarize with the facility layout and operation. Then the one I just added is the applicant must construct the project in accordance with the approved plan.
Only one quick question I have through the chairs. Are they going to put up any signs, O'Leary Welding signs? Some of that's by right, right?
Yeah.
Or, okay. So we're not worried about that?
I don't believe we do the signs. I think that's the select board. I'm sorry.
Okay. Through the chair, one question. Just because it could come up, and maybe it's a standard fare, and if there's any blasting, is there protocol? I know, call neighbors, whatever.
That's going to be under the earth.
Does that be under that?
Yeah.
Just wanted to bring it up.
Through the chair, dust control also looking for earth removal?
Yes. This is for the site plan.
Dust control.
Dust control.
Interesting.
Mr. Flansburgh, we close the public hearing.
All right, no.
Is there a point of order or?
Is there, is, are they going to be blasted?
Yeah.
So that would be a question to ask when they come forward and have a public hearing for the earth removal process. Because right now, they can't do anything with this site until they have that. Makes sense?
Thank you.
Okay.
Probably brought it up, yeah.
All right. So the motion, I'll have, you know, it was made and seconded. Do we remember who it was? I don't.
I seconded it.
Okay.
It was Mike and Mike. Mike and Mike.
Okay. Mike Switzer made it, seconded by Mr. DeRose. We had a discussion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? One abstention from Mr. Gennett. All right, so that one's all settled.
Thank you very much, folks, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you, Mark. Have a good holiday.
Here's a grant decision, first signatures.
Okay, moving along. Public hearing continued for McIntyre Loan Incorporated. Application for special permit, SP-240416. Earth removal permit, ER-240416. Site plan review, SPR-240416. Outdoor manufacturing and processing. Off legacy circle, possible votes. All right, just name and association or minute taker?
Yep, my name is Michael Dryden. I'm a senior project manager with Allen Engineering, here once again on behalf of Tom McIntyre, McIntyre Loan. And I believe Tom is joining us via Zoom.
Didn't see his name.
Yeah, he just popped up there, so.
Hi, I'm here. I'll stay on mute until you need something from me about Tom McIntyre, the applicant, for the record.
Thank you, Tom. Can you just bring us up to speed?
Yes, I would be happy to do so. I wanted to just get a couple of quick things, easy things, out of the way. The first one on my list is I briefly talked about the property line two weeks ago. I know you got a message about the property line, and I'm hoping you can see this exhibit, but the red line that you see right here is an interior property line, so it really doesn't have any bearing on anything. It's not part of the common ownership, the perimeter. But this is where, that red line is what was shown on the initial submission, and what that did was it created a separation here. And I think that's what led to some confusion with the note that you received. It turns out, so our math on the boundary is all set and correct, but we hadn't paid a lot of attention to the interior property lines, again, because they're inconsequential to what we're doing. It's all common ownership. We did take the time just to make sure everybody was comfortable, and we calculated those property lines, added the meets and bounds. And in reality, that this red property line is actually meeting at that point. So exactly what we had proposed initially, 100 feet minimum distance between that, this property in Uxbridge and the work is maintained. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Questions on that one? The second item. It was a discussion about just site context, and I did prepare an aerial, as you had requested, and I do have, maybe a few to go that way.
Sure.
And, thanks. I'm going to hang on to one of them, unless you need it. Actually, I might have another one. So again, it was, does everybody have a copy?
Yeah, we can share.
I might have, I actually do have one more, so that.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yep, there you go.
I have this.
One more.
Good deal. Just enough. So again, you had asked for an aerial photograph, and I think that was a very good suggestion, and I think it just helps everybody understand the lay of the land, the butters. So obviously, to the south where there's no work occurring, I didn't worry about down there. I focused the north, to the north of the property, northwest of the property, where Walnut Grove Street is. So what I did was I outlined the property line, the subject property, in bold yellow. You see the town line that separates the property along the northern boundary, and then in the dash line, labeled work area, is essentially the, the limit of work that was presented on the plan last time. And I also showed some distances to some of the nearest homes, and I think the Clifford Residence was one that we discussed last time in particular. So I added a dimension from the back of the residence to the nearest point of the work, which is 810 feet. And as you can see, I would say about 2/3 of that is wooded. And then the house in Uxbridge, just to the north of the Clifford Residence, is about 770 feet. And I also added the Emmerich property, because that is the piece that I just pointed out. That's the closest property to our work. But as you can see here, the dwelling is way up at West Hartford Avenue, which is about 1,300 feet away. And then just to sort of close the loop here, I added another dimension, moving east on West Hartford, of 830 feet to that residential dwelling. So hopefully, that sort of helps bring it all into context.
My only question off that, though, is the work area is pretty isolated in that corner. What's, how are you getting to that work area? Is there going to be a road or?
Yeah, yep.
That bridge.
As you may recall, I can point that out again. So last summer, we, actually, it was more recent. We, yeah, it was last summer. Hard to see on this plan that there's an existing road that's been built to here. We're actually as-builting that and submitting that to the Conservation Commission. It includes a stream crossing. So all the infrastructure to access this is fully permitted. It's built. It's being as-built, and we're seeking a final certificate of compliance from the commission. So I didn't show that access. I'm just showing you where the, the actual work will occur. But that is shown on the plans. So if you look to the south, you'll see Lot 6, which is also McIntyre, that open earth area. That access drive comes right off of the northern tip of that work and connects to what I labeled work area. Exactly.
When was this? Did you take this picture or is this off of Google?
Yeah, this is just an available Google image. Yeah, this is just an available Google image.
Just curious how, like, up to date the picture.
This is actually, I didn't make note of the date, but I will tell you, just by looking at Lot 6, it's very recent.
Okay. Just try to get a context of.
I would say it's within a month or two.
All right.
Any other points? Yes, I just wanted to, not plans, but I just wanted to talk about the peer review for a moment. We did receive that. And just a, actually, very, very minor comments. There's a few comments in here where I'm not sure if Graves didn't have the application package that included the waiver lists. I think we can easily address these when I provide a written response, but there's a couple that we did already ask for waivers that they noted information lacking on the plan. And then I can go through each one of these, but I don't know if you want me to do that, Mr. Chairman, but there's some minor technical drainage calculation comments that we can easily address, really just some minor discrepancies between the actual hydrology calculations and the plans, very, very simple stuff. So I don't see anything on here that causes me concern whatsoever. I think we can easily address it.
Mr. Benoit, any follow-ups from you and your department?
Sure. So from the last meeting, one of the butters, Ms. Flansburgh, asked us if there was a condition on the previous earth removal permit for Lot 6 for noise testing. And yes, there is. There was a condition. Once operation has begun, approximately 12 to 18 months, to the extent required, the applicant and board have agreed to perform a noise testing on site. The applicant and board have agreed a cash bond, the amount of $20,000 for any noise mitigating measures that may be required to limit propagation of noise. And I did get a response from Mr. McIntyre, who was on Zoom, who can talk about their noise study that they've started.
Yeah, that should be a good time to go into that. Tom?
Hi, good evening. Yeah, we did, I don't want to say commission, but we reached out to a sound engineer to perform some testing and modeling on what we've done in a zone that proposed a lot, because our anticipated goal is to move the current processing and machinery onto the back lot, the one that's before you. And we think that will be the general noise maker. The future intended use for Lot 6, the, what I'll call the front lot here, that you can see it's already open on the Google Earth maps, is going to be most likely our retail yard and some light processing will be a lot, I think significantly less noisy. So we're trying to have the study be, I guess, receptive to what I'd imagine that the chief complaints are or would be regarding it. So I will say we're only in the early phases. We're just trying to give information to our engineer right now. I'm getting back some basic information, but we are trying to accommodate that and make sure that the site appropriately mitigates noise. I don't have any much more further to say other than that, other than we just, we've started the process of trying to make sure that the plan that's submitted before you is going to meet any noise requirements.
Any other points, Mr. Benoit?
Yep, so one of the things identified in the peer review was the planning board may wish to inquire the applicant their expected project duration. Now, I understand that this is, I guess, the permanent home of McIntyre Loom, but I think the board was discussing bond and discussing about, you know, if anything were to happen, heaven forbid, that the use is no longer required, what sort of bond to bring the site back to restoration would be required. Now, they asked for a waiver of this, but our board has been pretty firm on the requirements of bond and earth removal, so just kind of wanted to talk about that, I guess.
Yeah, can I address that for a second, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Tom.
So yeah, I note that you all did waive the restoration requirement on Lot 6, with the idea being that our general goal was just to get to a gravel bottom. That was our, you know, building, so to say, was just having a gravel base. The lots 1 and 2 on Legacy Circle for second generation, the Tetrachlorian property, that, this board waived restoration on that lot as well. And we think that this, we think it's common sense to waive it, because our whole goal was not to put, it's not just to excavate the earth and be gone with it like a regular earth removal will be. Our goal is to create our permanent home there, and our permanent home wants to rest on a gravel bottom floor there. And we're trying our best to, I think I'll put it this way, there's a bit of a hole, I think, in the bylaws in this town when it comes to a project like this, where there's not a building. I think you just ran into it with the meeting that was just before me. They're going to have to submit an earth removal permit for some of their parking areas. I would submit a restoration doesn't make sense in that scenario, because they're going to put a parking pad there. In the same vein, we're going to put our equipment there, our piles there, and the only thing that's going to be open is the roadways around it. So we think what we've done is using this combination of earth removal slash site plan approval was try to follow the spirit of the bylaws without, while still being forthright with the board. I guess I put it another way, the underhanded or self-infused way to do it would be to just propose a 100,000 square foot building on this lot and then get the site to, you know, the bottom floor and say, actually, never mind, I don't want to build a building anymore. I'll just move in. In that scenario, there wouldn't be a bond, but I submit that's not very forthright to the board. It's not very forthright to our neighbors. We're here before you, trying to explain what we actually want to do long-term with the project. And I think in that scenario, a waiver makes sense. And I'll talk a little bit about this with Mr. Menaric once, and, you know, his opinion is always that if something happened to us, he'd have, he'd have a plan before you, before we could even link with some sort of building there for commercial tax base. So I understand that in an ordinary earth removal, there would certainly need to be restoration of the whole lot, but in this scenario, we're just trying to get to a level base so that we can operate on there. And I think that's what makes sense for waiving this one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bylaw-wise, any input?
I mean, even Pine, Santa Stone had a bond, you know? We understand, I fully understand Mr. McIntyre's position here, and I think, you know, the past engineer kind of used to hold the bond against, you know, Mr. McIntyre and its use. And I don't think that's what we're trying to do here. I think this bond is strictly for the purposes of restoration only. If, in fact, anything were to happen, where they ended up relocating or whatever it is, that's what we're looking for. It's just protection against the unexpected. I think that's the intent of the bond.
Through the chair, and with all due respect to, you know, their operation and the whole deal, things do happen in this life. And the idea is, is hold the bag with two open pits and not even whatsoever. Now, as long as they're operating or whatever, I totally understand. You have a gravel bottom, it's a gravel. But we've heard that story in many other projects, and people just disappear. And now you're held with absolutely nothing. So I agree with what Matt's saying. I mean, even way back in the day, many, Mr. Jim Pine, he'd always come in, there was never a problem, even though we knew that it was a continuous operation. There was never an issue with having that, just as a safety sign.
Through the chair?
Yes.
How would it work? What would the duration of the bond be?
Be in perpetuity.
In perpetuity?
Cash bond.
Or until the building gets built?
There is no building in this case.
Or it's sold off.
Right. And if I can, through the chair, there could be something on it where it's reviewed, say every so many years because of increased inflation and this and that, where it's reviewed, or say every five years, a report's brought in, hey, this is what we're still doing, this is what's going on, have a look at.
Through the chair, if a property is sold, is the bond transferable? Meaning, can they sell to the new owner, reimburses them for the bond, and then they acquire the bond under new sale?
Typically not. No. I don't understand. Like, the bond is tied to it particularly?
The McIntyre Trust has a bond out for 100 years, and they have money out cash bond on it at some point. When do they ever recover that? Or is that just the doing business? In 30 years, the bond's not worth a lot of money because inflation and everything. I mean, it's just business, right? Or if they make the deal and they get that part of, that's part of it, if they sell the property and they get reimbursed.
Anyone else thoughts on that for them?
Yeah, I guess, through the chair, now, given what's going on with Pine, if they sell that.
Right.
Their bonds, return the bonds, or whatever. Do the sale, and away you go. I mean, it's there to protect the people of the area.
And the neighbors, especially.
Mr. Chairman, I could throw you a question or two. So I, you know, I don't mean to preach, but if you read the bylaw, it's really interesting. And the bylaw is really well-written, and whoever wrote it was very clever. Basically, it says, we can waive requirements, but we probably shouldn't. And it says if you do, it should only be because in waiving it, it's in the best interest of the town and the community. And if you use that criteria, we'd never be waiving anything, because it's not in the best interest of the town. It's not in the best interest of the residents, especially the neighbors. And also, I'm opposed personally to a lot of these waivers. I just feel like, you know, they were well-intentioned, but I feel like they just get a life of their own. And with projects like these, come summertime, it's a dust bowl. It was really terrible last summer, and I went and looked at some of these permits, and some of the permits, five, 10, 20 acres opened up, there was permit after permit after permit, waiver after waiver after waiver. Things are wide open. And the bonding, who does the bonding protect? It just protects us. It protects the town. There shouldn't even be, you know, a big debate about that. We're not here for them. I'm sorry, you seem very nice. We're not here for you. We're here for the residents. Sorry, I just, I had to say that because, you know, I read through the bylaws, and it's really well-written, and it's really very simple. We probably shouldn't.
Did you read it?
I'm sorry?
Did you read it?
I've read it a couple times. This is for the upcoming election. It was like I was, I was like in a master's class.
Did you write it, is what he asked?
No, well, did I write it? I'm sorry. Not that one. The accessory bylaw I did. And I came in, I couldn't remember it. I didn't know what the hell was on there. I know it now. I digress. So I just, I do have a legitimate question. So the total area we're talking about is 11 acres, is that correct?
Correct, and that includes the two stormwater basins. That's the total disturbance.
Right. So disturbance meaning you're going to clear the area?
Yeah, the limit of work, where your erosion control barriers established, everything inside of that is 11 acres.
And that's the work area.
That's the work area outlined on the aerial.
And the bed is not going to be dirt, it's going to be gravel, is that correct?
Yeah, essentially.
All gravel and not bare dirt?
Well, I mean, it's an open soil condition, so, you know, they're going to be handling piles of material, so there'll be varying surface conditions.
Yeah, and I know, I know that's sort of an extension of the type of business you're in, but that's where we get into trouble, these big open areas.
Well, I mean, this, just to address that, Mr. Preston, the exact same operation as shown on this aerial is underway, and they've managed it very, very well. The stormwater basins are in great shape. They've done a great job maintaining stabilized slopes on the basins, maintaining stormwater, directing stormwater into the basins. There have been no issues with sediment leaving the site. They're very cognizant of it, and they do a great job of managing the.
I'm not mistaken, I could be. I thought there was some dust complaints in that area last summer. I think there was some neighbors who were not.
I can't speak to that. It's certainly possible, but I'm speaking more to the stormwater management aspect of it.
But I understand, that's my concern. However, however it's being left, however it's being worked, we want to try to minimize the effect, detrimental effect on the neighbors and the community.
Absolutely. And I know that Mr. McIntyre does utilize water trucks during extremely dusty, dry periods, especially when wind events are predicted, so that's.
Do you mitigate that at all? I'm sorry. Do you mitigate that at all?
Beyond what I just said?
Well, people put down materials and stuff to, you know, on open areas that aren't being used, so that when you have high heat and low humidity, you're going to have less dust. Do you do any type of mitigation?
I'll have to defer to Tom on that.
We have used certain chemical additives in the past on that. For the most part, we try to just use water, but we have done that in the past, use, I think, a calcium treatment or magnesium treatment helps keep dust down further.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right. Any other points, Mr. Benoit, from your end?
Obviously, the hydrology things are items that the engineers, so that they can address, so that's really good. But it's really, we're talking about the bond, we should talk about the restoration, of course. So the bond for restoration, that should also be submitted as part of the package. But we should likely go through the waivers, discuss which ones we're considering, which ones we're not, so they know how to reformulate their package.
The waivers?
Yeah. I have the waivers.
I suppose you were in front of, maybe there might be something, oh, we want to work on for the next meeting. So yeah, let's discuss that then.
So the waiver one was the waiver of the bond. I don't believe this board.
Could you pull your mic closer?
Sure. Sorry. Waiver one was waiver of the bond requirement. Not sure how this board feels about that, but it seems to be.
Do you want to make a vote or have them go off of the opinion and maybe remove it?
We don't vote until we close the public hearing, so I don't think we're ready to do that yet. But if the engineer can take the temperature of the room, I think that's probably good enough.
I'm feeling the heat, yeah.
If that isn't the consensus of the planning board, I think the next logical question is how we go about calculating that in a very unique situation such as this, where there's no buildings, it's, you know, an open gravel floor. And by the way, as we've said in the narrative and all along, any side slopes and the detention basins, the interceptus soils, those are all planned to be loomed and seeded anyway. So really, what's, I guess, remains in question is the flat floor of the project, if you will.
Through the chair and through Matt, I think, in my perspective, it's, you know, it's bring in loom, plant seed, and let it regenerate as wood, but eliminate, if it was a bad, I'm just saying, this is the bond, what to calculate off of. I'm not an engineer, but I think, give us a playfield, you know, like just plant grass seed, anything, just get it so it's.
Yeah, three inches of loom minimum with a seed.
That's it, right, and then a tree sprouts up and a bush sprouts up. I mean, that's, just eliminate the dust, so.
If I can, through the chair, I've been on some site walks, where they said that they've done that. That three inches of loom has nuggets in it the size of footballs. So it's one of those deals, what are you playing? So that's something that can work out.
So proper loom and.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about cost here, so I guess when we apply cost, we want to make sure that we apply the cost of the quality material.
Right. If I can, through the chair, like I said, I've been on site walks with this board before, where they've said they've loomed and seeded, and there's been football-sized rocks. So, I mean.
Well, screen loom, half inch, you know, it's like what McIntyre sells. He sells this product.
Pretty familiar with the product.
I know, I know, we bought it.
And the same, just any fat.
So that's why the bond is there.
Right.
Right.
Well, that's why.
You're not going to get the money. I agree, we both agree on the same thing.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one point? I know there was a lot of response about the bond, and I'd just like to make a couple points to it if I could.
Sure.
Because, so, I guess, I kind of, and again, I think I'm just trying to get to what I view as somewhat common sense. I mean, the other, the other way you could look at it is we could clear the lot, loom and seed it, you guys could sign off on it, and I could just move in right on top of it and do the same thing, but now I'm not, now there's no bond over me. That could be a possibility other, and I said it rhetorically before, but, I mean, we could just withdraw this petition, come back with a 100,000 square foot building, and just choose not to build it. And once we got to the grades we wanted, and there would be no bond in that situation either. So again, I'm trying to be, we're trying to be forthright with the board of what we're actually doing, and I understand all the reasons why you would want restoration, but it just, there's no good way in the bylaws to get where we want our end goal to be. And I know we've said, Mr. Benoit mentioned that it's okay, it won't ever be called on as long as we're operating there, but I'm not so sure that's going to be the case. I feel like the board 10 years from now might see a restoration bond and might say, I feel like the board 10 years from now might see a restoration bond, and might say, when are you going to get around to restoring this? That's, that's what I'm worried, concerned, is not this board, it's the board 10 to 15 years in the future. And again, it just seems illogical in a sense to me that I could restore it, get it checked off, and then move in right on top of it without any bond, or propose a building, you know, underhandedly propose a building. I just, I don't know. And in the same, again, if CRG, I'm just going to use CRG as an example, because we all know that warehouse, they, they could have gone belly up before they put any concrete in the ground too, and where would they be? There's just, it seems like it's just this one section that's singled out versus any other construction in, in town. And you know, that would be my major pitch on that.
Through the chair, man, we have no problem with any other open pit area having a bond for the restoration.
Thank you, thank you for your, Mr. Chairman, for letting me address that.
Thank you, Tom.
You know what I mean? I, what Mr. Preston said and everything else, I mean, and I don't know how easy it would be to just go back into what he said he wants, to do some plant seed, and then just go on top of it, all operating a business now, so I don't know how that would fly.
Because it would still be an earth-removable operation.
Right.
So, no, it would be, oh, sorry, no, it would be done at that point, the earth removal would be done, would just be going in and using, you know, my use rights, my right uses at that point.
I don't know what that is, it's not good, so.
Yeah.
So, my understanding is, once you have the pad-ready site, you no longer be removing earth from this site, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, this is a temporary operation. It's just the grades that you see on the plan, and to get to that flat floor, if you will, and then it's no longer an excavation or earth-removal process.
So, what it is, it's material coming in, processed, then material leaving.
Correct.
Yeah, I know it's very familiar, what goes on. So, depends on how it's worded and what goes on, you're bringing in thousands and thousands of yards of material, processing it all, sorting it all out, then removing thousands and thousands of yards of material. So, you have material coming in, material going out.
That doesn't drive the restoration.
Yes, that's where I was.
So, with the warehouse, it had a bond.
Until it was built. Until it was built?
Yeah.
Well, I think the restoration that we're thinking of would just protect the town if, God forbid, there's a pile that hasn't been sorted, and just out of nowhere McIntyre Loon goes bankrupt, and it's there. Just, I think it's just a worst-case scenario protection. I, I, I understand both sides of it, it just, you know, we're trying to protect the town and the town of others with it.
Absolutely, and, you know, I think for any other, I'm sure at some point I'll be back before you with an earth removal permit on a lot that is not something that we own. I would not try to waive the restoration on that one. We're only doing it because it's something that we're planning to use the lot in this particular way, in the same way that lots one and two, the second generation are using the mass storage, they just wanted to give it to a gravel base, and now they're using it that way, that's, that's what we want to do. They don't have a restoration bond on that one, just more waived than, and that's.
Well, that also wasn't a earth-removable permit, that was a site.
It was, it was a site plan and an earth-removable permit.
Was it? Yeah.
Yes.
I.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, it'll be, Mr. Chairman, I just, I looked it up in preparation for this.
All right, I think we're going to need more research, I don't know if we're going to have a decision on it, I think we'll have to get.
I know we're closing the meeting tonight anyways, I just wanted to raise some of the points to allow us what we're talking about here. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman, to let me examine that.
Yeah, I, we're going to need to have more research on it, I'm sorry, I can't make a decision on it, it's good points from both sides. I think, Mr. Benoit, if you can just do some more research.
Sure.
For it. As much as I want to make a decision so they know what to do going forward, I'm not going to be, I don't think we're going to be prepared to make an educated decision on it at this point.
Section 6.1.6.3, no excavation, a special permit issued here under or may be within 100 feet of existing public way or adjacent property line. It's definitely not within 100 feet of public way, and adjacent property line is in common ownership, and that's why you're asking for the waiver on that.
Yeah, I want to be sure we needed this waiver, to be perfectly honest with you. Here's our current site boundary for this application, but McIntyre Loon owns land on both sides. So, we're maintaining the 100 feet from the nearest abutting property owner, other than Tom's property.
And so, so a town boundary.
So, we just, yeah, so we just included the waiver.
I don't think there's any issue with that.
Through the chair, this is something we, we hope council can advise us on, it seems like the, that Mr. McIntyre has pointed out some things in the bylaws, and he thinks he understands it's not required regardless. Maybe we don't understand it completely, but maybe town council should expound on that.
Okay. I'll have them look into the bond requirement.
Well, I want the pleasure of the board.
That's fine.
If I could just, through the chair, is your comment to seek advice from town council, whether or not the actual waiver is required, and this board has backed on the waiver?
It's been suggested that this waiver is not even required.
Well, I just gave you my opinion, but I included the waiver request in the application, so, I just wanted to make that clear.
I don't know, town council is a little more embedded in this, immersed in it, so.
Okay, I'll have them look at that.
Whatever the pleasure of the board is on.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Benoit, do you?
I mean, they're asking for a waiver, I don't see any, any harm in granting it, considering it's common ownership. I don't have an issue with that.
But it's not, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but they're saying it's not required.
Yeah, so we could have council check that, just because it's town boundary.
Does it make a big difference if it's not required and they just, they request it?
Yeah.
And it's.
No.
And that's exactly why we did it, because there's a slight gray area here, so we just wanted to make sure we covered the bases. If it's the pleasure of the board that you're willing to grant the waiver, it's not harming anybody, it's its own property.
Right.
You could simply grant the waiver.
Right.
I think it's, in my opinion, that simple.
Next item was no excavation, shall be made at least 10 feet above the annual Ohio water table, establish test pits from soil borings, and I believe Graves kind of talked about that.
So, this is one of the items that they, I don't think, realized that we're requesting a waiver for it, they just called it out. This is consistent with what we did on lot six. More typical is four feet.
Right.
And that's what we're holding. 10 feet is, is, in my experience, unheard of to hold 10 feet to groundwater.
Yeah.
That's a lot, we essentially, you know, it's, that would prohibit a lot of activity in this town, if you had to maintain.
Did Graves give an opinion on that?
I don't, I don't think he did.
Okay.
I think they just simply called it out, Mr. Chairman, from lot taken.
I don't have a.
Let's see here. Yes, it's comment number three on the first page, right at the bottom. It says the grading should be revised such that earth cuts are not proposed within 10 feet, so, clearly, I think they just, again, maybe they didn't have this package and didn't see the way it was.
Yeah, it's kind of weird.
Well, excuse me, through the chair, do they mean earth cuts or final, final?
Both. If, if I read the bylaw, it just says no activity, earth activity can happen within 10 feet of the groundwater. So, again, we've maintained, we, there's quite a bit of separation for most of the site, at the, at the pinch point, if you will, it's, it's at least four feet offset.
That's normal, I mean, we granted the waiver on the last item also.
Mr. Chairman, there must be some reasoning now, there's 10 feet in the bylaw, and if it, if it's unreasonable, then maybe we should consider changing it.
Yeah.
But to simply pass over it time and again, just doesn't seem good.
That's a good point. I mean no disrespect when I say this, because I work in many, many towns, but because it's in the bylaw, it doesn't always mean it was well-thought-out, sometimes it's, it's just written that way, but.
Was that, well, through the chair, was that for the aquifer area, maybe, or they did that? And it ended up in here?
Yeah, I don't know, it's possible.
I mean, that was already a law as well.
Yeah, I think it was regarding the septic, but.
Yeah, and that's likely, that's usually where that originates for septic systems, and in accordance with Title V, you need four feet of naturally occurring material, so, we're leaving that four feet.
All right. Next one is all top and subsoil strip from operations shall be stockpiled, seeded with erosion-controlled seed mixture and used in restoring area. I mean, they're kind of using the topsoil, I mean.
Yeah, what we would plan to do is to, is to strip and stockpile only what's needed to stabilize the side slopes and the detention basins and the drainage quails, much like lot six. So, the reason the waiver's here, it says all top and subsoil, so we're going to utilize some of it, but certainly not all of it.
Next one is the active excavation operation shall be determined by the board, but in no instance shall exceed the total of 10 acres at one time. But this is, they're asking for 11 acres, so asking for an extra acre as part of the waiver.
If I could through the chair.
And some of those are the storms, the detention basins.
Yeah, so, in my opinion, again, this is one of those waivers that's a little bit gray, because the first thing we're going to do is, is excavate and stabilize the detention basins, and then your active work area will be less than 10 acres, but, again, there's a little bit of ambiguity there, so, the limit of work is 11, so I included the waiver.
Seems fair.
All right.
There are three more. So, six and 6.1.6.10 to 13, this revolves trucking routes, access roads, and access roads constructed, I think, this doesn't include an access road, and the truck entering sign is already posted because of the legacy circle subdivision approval. I didn't have any issues with this. 6.1.7.1 restoration carried on simultaneously with excavation, so an active excavation area is, is operation area, is determined in section 616, paragraph nine, has been excavated, at least two-thirds of active excavation operation should be restored before works commences, a next contiguous active excavation operation. That is very.
That's a mouthful.
Funny language. Final restoration shall be completed within 100 days, 120 days after excavation. Relief is requested for the restoration requirements, and CEAP can attempt to utilize the level unpaved yards for its permanent operation. Restoration of the offgrading slope detention basis permits will be done in general compliance with the section. So, they're going to seed and, and loom and seed the entire slopes that they're building in order to get to the pad area. So, that's, I mean, that makes sense, I guess. And the last one is retain subsoil, topsoil should be spread over disturbed area to minimum depth of four inches, treated with three tons of lime per acre, seeded with a grass mixture prescribed, so the Worcester County Conservation District, the Mass Highway Department for Slope Erosion Control Trees, shrubs prescribed, species will be planted to provide screening and reduce erosion during establishment period. Relief is requested from the restoration requirements, since CEAP intends to utilize the level unpaved yard for its permanent operation, restoration of the offgraded slopes, detention basis, perimeter soils will be done in general compliance. So, they're asking for relief for the, really, the, the area in which they're going to be staging. So, I mean, I understand, a lot of these kind of makes sense, it's just.
Yeah, I think, I'll have to reach out to town council for the bond issue. Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes.
If I could, through you, to the applicant. By waiving seven, we also waived the timetable, 120 days for restoration. So, my question would be, the offgrade slopes, detention basins, perimaterals, will be done in compliance, but what would the timetable be for that?
Tom, any idea? Did you hear that question?
I would, I would say we'd try to put them in when they were dug out, especially the drainage stations, we, when they're dug out and complete, I think, Matt, maybe you could, help me on this, I think there might be a preliminary inspection of it, or something like that, once that they're dug out, and after that, we'd loom and seed the slopes, and whenever we got to the finished grade, we'd do it, assuming the season was correct, it wasn't the middle of winter, we'd do it in the next planting season, the spring or the fall, in the same way we've done lot six, in the same way we've done the access road that we just built. We're pretty good at getting it loomed and seeded timely.
So, if I could, just as a.
I would think, assuming it was in a, you know, near planting season, it would be done in 120 days, once that slope was carved.
I mean, that, that sounds reasonable, so if we're waiving seven, number seven, if we're waiving that requirement, then if we could put, we could waive it, but if we have some language that states just what he said, so we'd have some sort of timetable and perimeters for restoration just of those areas.
Maybe in the decision?
Yeah.
Or like a condition?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board, any other comments or questions before I go to the public? Okay, this is a public hearing, anyone in the audience with any comments, questions? Mr. Flansmore, if you can just kind of come up a little bit, just so the mics can pick you up.
Absolutely, sir. I'll come up. Can we flip to page on the easel here? Page two of six. I happened to go down to the town, to the building block today.
Hold on, let me just get him on that page, make sure we're on the same page.
Okay, no, no, I'm sorry, sir, uh, Chairman, I, I.
Is that the?
The easel was, was tilted towards you guys at the last meeting, and I didn't have an opportunity to really.
Is that the page you wanted to, you're referencing?
I do.
Okay.
All right. Now, first off, the applicant keeps mentioning, all right, the possibility of a building in some form, he's alluding to it. Please note that on regency way, he has no frontage, okay? This is, this is basically a junk piece of property. There is no frontage, and quite frankly, I don't even know if he owns this, or if Mr. McIntyre owns it. I think he's leasing it from Meritater. Couple of things, I don't know of anything called Tom Road, all right, and Uxbridge Street, I think, is, is West Street?
It's a confusing thing, Mr. Flansmore, with West Street.
Okay, yeah, all right, but we can get over that, that's, this is some of the semantics here. Now, if you notice, it appears that this is the gas line, and then out of nowhere, it just disappears, and I don't know where it goes. All of a sudden, you get to the, which is not even mine, this is a 30-inch high-pressure gas, pentacle gas line, and it just disappears. I'm not sure where that gas line goes.
Right along the property.
Right, well, then why?
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Flansmore, Mr. Flansmore, hold on, I just want to try to control the.
Okay.
I don't want you to go too far into it without answering some questions. Is there, is the gas pipeline referencing other plans at all?
Yes, it is.
Within the packet?
The plan you're looking at is confusing, because I drew the whole property line, that property line's probably 15 feet thick, just for graphic purposes. The easement is clearly shown there. That's the easement, and it continues right through here.
But it's, it's on, it's definitively labeled on another.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll make, I have to revise the plans, I'll make sure it's even more visible, that's, that's no problem at all.
And.
Do you want Mr. McIntyre to address the ownership question?
Hold on, just one second, guys. And if you can just make a distance to it, to.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Piece of cake.
Yeah, so, just the ownership question, I'm just going to talk about that first. Mr. McIntyre?
I can't see the plan that he's referencing. All of the property that's, that Mike is showing you is owned by Six Legacy Circle LLC, which is effectively me and McIntyre Loon, that's just an LLC company, leases all to McIntyre Loon. We own the entirety of the parcel before you, we own all of lot six. There is frontage on Legacy Circle, there also is frontage on Hartford Ave West, the parcel connects through, a piece of parcel is owned in Uxbridge. We're not really showing it here, because it's not relevant to it, but there is, the land of Jason, so Mr. Emmerich's is also owned by Six Legacy Circle.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know what piece he was referencing, but I think everything is, everything Mike's been talking about is, is owned by us, effectively.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just going to, what, I think the reason this came up initially was because he mentioned the building, there are no buildings proposed. I think Mr. McIntyre was just walking through a scenario where if he wanted to propose a building, that's not the case here, there are no buildings proposed, I just want everybody to understand.
Something like that would be something further down the road.
Of course, if any building were ever proposed, we'd have to be back before this board, but that's not the proposal.
With appropriate second plan approval.
With frontage and meeting dimensional requirements and all of those.
So with that, Mr. Flansburgh, is there proper frontage for this project?
Yeah, through contiguous ownership of Six Legacy Circle.
Okay.
Where would that frontage be?
It is on Legacy Circle. It's the slide as well. The slide has this frontage, it's a common ocean.
Correct, I don't think, I don't believe they have 100 feet of frontage. That was the whole issue from the start.
Approve, sir.
All right, all right. If we can agree to disapprove, sir.
Maybe that can be just on the plan of how much frontage you have on the.
This exact same thing came up during the permitting of lot six, where we addressed it.
Some of the notice on the plan, maybe, on the ownership.
Lot six was trying to buy three feet of my property, this little dibbit right here, for 30 years, and I wouldn't have to sell it to him. And so we put this in, and leased this property, and now he got into this whole vein.
So so far, the issues, are we good? Are the answers been, I know they're not the answers you want, but have they been answered?
This whole thing might be, might be approved, and he might not have appropriate frontage. I don't think he has it myself.
Okay.
But that's, but that's up for, I guess, another day, Chairman. Now, lot 30, this is coming out, and it appears that this is a grab to go, to come out on the Monroe Street. I can guarantee you, I'll get everybody on Monroe Street to sign a petition that we don't want any access out onto Monroe Street. I don't know why he would be cutting through here. It's abundantly clear. First off.
I, I don't think, that's just showing the property lines. I don't think there's anything proposed for that.
I don't know, I don't know why. This, this appears, if I look at this, Mr. Chairman, this is what they're going to be clearing.
No.
No.
All right, all right, I just, I don't know. But why this is coming out, and it appears this is where the cemetery is, I know exactly where that is, but, see, this is what's kind of confusing, especially to me. This is Mr. Van Reed, all right? I believe I'm here. I believe I, I know I'm here. I can't tell. I believe this is a street, that's he owned street, but I'm, I'm very confused on what's going on here. And why, this gives me the impression that they're in a clear cut, the woods is almost right to that cemetery, which is right at the corner here, incredible here.
So have you seen, did you see this at all? Is this something?
No, I, I, that was something we requested, yeah.
This, this plan, we're talking about the work area that's highlighted.
Yeah, it's the, it's the plan of this side of Douglas, it's a big sand pit.
Would you like me to?
Yeah. Yes, please.
So it's like a farm lot.
You see this box right here? First of all, this whole line is the property line, it's not the limit of clearing. This, this box right here is this street, okay?
Yeah, I know.
Do you see that?
Jeremy, Jeremy, back off, Jeremy, please back off.
There's no work proposed. There's, there's wetland and buffer zone here, there's another sizable wetland between here and Monroe, and there's no work proposed west of this point.
So I'm going to consider that the answer for that issue. So if you move on to other comments or questions, Jeremy?
Yes, sir. All right, we already talked about the frontage. Oh, okay, and on this particular plan, I really don't have the feeling, you know, you get the Dunleavy Brook, but, I mean, maybe this is not in jurisdiction of this particular board, but what's going to happen with these wetlands that you're going to be cutting right through? And, and you're calling it an unnamed intermittent stream, but then down here, it's a Dunleavy Brook. And I don't happen to see, there's a pond on my property that I don't see either.
It's on the other plan.
Okay, so.
There's a couple of things going on here. So first of all, the resource areas were all submitted to the commission and confirmed through the Anrad process. So they've all been mapped and accepted and approved by the commission. They're all accurately shown on that plan. There's, there are two streams. There's an intermittent stream, it's an unnamed intermittent stream, and then there's the Dunleavy Brook. There are two separate streams. One is intermittent, one is perennial. Again, all approved by the Conservation Commission. Regarding the pond on his property, we don't map resources off-site on someone else's property.
And that's something for conservation as well, if that's an issue.
This actual, this actual proposal is not before the Conservation Commission, because we're not working within 100 feet of resource areas.
Even better.
So you filed, excuse me, through the chair, a request for determination. It was negative?
No, we filed an Anrad.
The Anrad, okay, the other one, okay, yeah.
To lock down all of the resource areas. So now we know exactly where they are and where their buffer zones are, and we kept all the work outside of those buffer zones.
Good.
It's, the Anrad process is a really good tool for that reason.
I'm just kind of concerned that if he does his excavation, it drains my pond, because that's a fire pond to put off the fire if my pond goes up on fire. And it's, it's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of wetlands in here.
Through the chair, by the way, Mr. Flansburgh.
That's called a Jefferson swamp. There's a lot of wetlands.
All right, hold on, Mr. Flansburgh. Sorry, I'm just, there's a lot of stuff, I'm trying to control it.
So the question is, Mr. Flansburgh, you have that aerial map, the Google map, and it shows your pond, it's behind your house.
Yes, sir.
So that pond is probably a good thousand feet from the work area. I'm just saying, just to say, something's going to drain something from something, I think the Atlantic Ocean is going to, Douglas is going to fall in. I mean, let's not, I, I, we're for you, but don't say that that's going to drain your pond, which is a thousand feet away. I just don't want that kind of hyperbole.
If he excavates four feet below the water table, he potentially could.
All right, so we hear your concern. Thank you.
And I guess my main concern is this particular ocelot, and how far he's going to be cutting into there.
So that was answered previously, that's well outside the work area.
And I guess my last question is, why this particular person, he's kind of getting shafted, I mean, he's down a landlock.
He's been landlocked.
I don't know who it is. It's not me. Unfortunately, this, I don't know why, I mean, I, when I first looked at this, I thought this was all going to be excavation and cleared, and I said, this poor guy's going to be landlocked.
And parcels are landlocked, it's been that way for a very long time. There was a paved street for Farm Street that was never constructed, so it kind of exists only on plans, but it doesn't exist in reality.
Okay, so, yeah, just whatever comments we've generated, if you update the plan.
Absolutely. I will address your comments, as well as the minor comments by Graves. I'll provide written responses to the comments and a set of revised plans.
Anyone else in the audience with questions or comments? Mr. Emmerich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question. I'm pretty familiar with the land back there, and there's a lot of ledge and stone. Will there be blasting back there? And if so, could, you know, there be some way to notify the abutters? Because when you guys were blasting earlier back there, we could feel it. So I think it would be considerate to the neighbors to just let us know if you are going to be blasting in advance, just as a consideration.
Through the chair. Okay, I don't know if you want to answer it, Tom?
Yeah, well, that came up two weeks ago, and, and we, we agreed to notify anybody that wants to be notified.
But there will be blasting involved.
Yeah, there's some blasting anticipated.
Yeah, because it's all serious ledge.
Correct, I think there will be, we don't know how much, because we don't know how much ledge we'll encounter until we start digging, but, Mr. Emmerich, I will reach out to you and make sure I have your number and any blasts going forward.
It's all ledge back there, Tom.
All right, yeah, and if, Tom, it can, in the meantime, think of a plan that he could present to us, of how he's going to let the abutters know, because there is concerns with blasting for this.
Yes, absolutely. We'll try to reach out to as many of them as we can, and.
But I think, Tom, if you just put it in writing, like a plan that you have, or that you're proposing for blasting, and how you would like to.
Within 24, 48 hours, kind of notification, something like that.
Yeah, just like a blasting, a written blasting plan, and how you would like to address it to the abutters, so they know.
Okay, I'm sure we can do something like that when we get to that point of the project. Like I said, I, maybe do we know ledge there? We just don't know yet, because we have done nothing but dig a few test pits, but when we get to the point where we're considering blasting, we'll try to come up with.
We'll put a, we'll make a.
Some sort of idea, and get the neighbors together and explain what's going to happen.
We'll make a.
Through the chair, it's quite easy. Make up a pre-plan. If you don't need it, you don't use it. Come up with a plan before this goes forward, so we can give it to all the abutters. It's been discussed for two meetings, just come up with a plan, and how you're going to address it. If you don't have to use it, that's great, throw the paper away. But if you do, we all know what's going to go down. Is that something?
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Yeah, I'll put something together, and we'll submit it in the package.
Yeah, just so the abutters know what it is, and we can reference it in the condition of following the blasting plan.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Emmerich. Yes?
Barbara Van Reed, 36 Monroe, I'm in the butter. Do you know, I'd like to know if they could tell me how far away the current site is from the proposed site?
Current to proposed.
Question, I'm going to give you my best guess here. 600 feet. So that's, I'm going to say about 650 to 700 feet of separation.
Approximately.
Okay, so, so what you're saying is, the new, I think what he's saying is, the new, the new site is going to be 600 feet closer to me than the current one.
Well, you're, so if I go to the chair, you're here.
Yes.
Right. And this is the proposed work area. So I added a dimension from the proposed work area to the back of your house, which is 800.
How about try my lawn line at 600 feet? We are outside a lot in the summertime? Okay, and.
So that's about half of that, so.
Okay, so you're going, you're going to be twice as close to me as, they're going to be twice as close as they are now, right?
Yeah, they're closer to you than they are.
They're going to be closer than they are now. And I submit to you that the noise that we hear today is bad news, and we're subjected to it 50 to 60 hours a week, starting at 6:30 in the morning till 5 o'clock every day, and another from, I think, from 6:30 to 3 o'clock on Saturdays. It's 50, 60 hours a week, and you are saying we're going to have to listen to this in perpetuity. The noise, the rock crushers, the backhoe, the excavators, all the alarms, when the, all the equipment moves in and out, and it's bad now. And you're saying it's going to be twice as close to us.
I just want to correct you, we didn't say you have to listen to this. We're going to listen to it, the proposal, and if there's issues, and we're going to address it, and have, and set up sound barriers if needed.
Thank you.
I just want you to say that we're forcing you to listen to this, we're going to take it into consideration.
Tell me, if I'm next to it, I submit, I hate to say this, but would you want this in here, next to you, to listen to this noise 50, 60 hours a week for the next 10, 20? I think I would rather have a building, at least it would only take a year or two to construct it. But you're saying we have to listen to this for the rest of our lives? I'm not saying you're saying this, I'm saying, Mr. McIntyre is saying this.
If I can through the chair, I think at the last meeting, we brought up, Matt brought it up, about the sound, about the noise, that it needs to meet DEP or the Mass Rights.
Yeah, it's DEP.
So sound study, like we had with Joe Jenny Road, needs to be performed before anything goes further, in my opinion, to make sure of what's going to be going on, especially for these close abutters.
I think Mr. McIntyre has already voluntarily commissioned a sound study.
Through the chair, I believe he's going to do it in the new work area. How about a study of the current work area, so we can see if the Van Reeds are being exposed to something that's outside the limits?
Get a baseline.
I mean, you have to start somewhere, and it's, like it or not, it's a nuisance to some people. And I don't think it's intentional. No one comes in and says, oh, I want to have a business, and I'm going to do this, and I'm going to make everybody hate me. So I think that we should establish what it is that, you know, the neighbors are not happy with, before saying, okay, we're going to go into a place that's fully wooded right now, and we're going to do a sound study, and half the attenuation is going to go away when the trees are all cut down. So I don't, I don't like doing a sound study on a wooded lot, because you're not going to get the as-built conditions, and by then it's too late. So you have the perfect example already. You've got the operation, and you can do sound studies from there and determine if, in fact, it's compliant.
Yeah, and I think as a part of the sound study, too, you can show whether a sound engineer, whoever it is, exactly what's going on. Here's the work area proposed, here are the abutters, they have concerns. What are your thoughts, sound study, engineering-wise?
That's typically how it works, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, Mr. Re.
Cliff Van Reed, on that sound study you're talking about, is there some kind of decibel limit that is imposed on a project like this, or what does it really do to do a sound study if there's no limits on the sound?
Yeah, there's a.
Yeah, there is a limit, I just don't know what it would be.
Through the chair, I think when we addressed this previously, it was a difference above ambient.
There are limits, yes.
Yeah, and that would be presented in the sound study, what the limits are.
What would you do if you had to mitigate the sound? What could you do to quiet it down?
Uh, that would be up to you to present what you would do, or the.
Yeah, I'm not a sound engineer, but I generally know some of the techniques that they use, birthing berms, vegetation.
Walls.
Walls, location of equipment comes into play, all those things.
So the stuff you do to limit it?
Yeah, certainly there are means to mitigate it.
Okay. Is that kind of the answer? There's limits, yes, and we just don't know the exact number right off the top of our head, but it would be presented in a sound study.
Can we find out what the height limit is, though? I mean, how many decibels?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they'll do that, they'll.
Through the chair, I think Matt's trying to find it. It'll be coming up on another meeting, close up.
Okay, yeah. But leave it, this is, it's not fun living with this noise now, and it's going to be much closer.
If I could.
And when we bought this land, you know, everything was, everything around, it was all zoned residential. And now, since we moved there, and I think the same thing is true for our neighbors, now it's been zoned industrial. And so this is not, you know, so this is being, and again, like I said last time, I am trying to be a good citizen, and I was not against zoning it industrial, because it helps the tax base. But I was kind of envisioning a building, you know, something that would, so not, not, not 20, 30, 40 years of rock crushing, and, and all of the noise that that involves. And so, so you're putting this thing, they're proposing, you put this right in an area surrounded by residences. All of us are going to have to listen to it.
Through the chair, can I ask something historical? This was residential, and this was voted by town meeting to turn this into industrial? This wasn't industrial? Like, when was the last time this was residential?
I don't.
I mean, when has that ever happened, where it's sound surrounded by neighbors, and all of a sudden, let's put an industrial between all the neighbors? Because I lived in Natick, and we had paperboard factory across the street. We, I've been living in this, so I just was curious, that's all.
It was just about five, six years ago?
What?
That's all. That's all.
Who are we?
I can't answer that.
You can't answer that?
But that's something that's done at, i- if that is accurate, it's done at town meeting, and that's what the resident voted.
Do, do you remember when that was done?
But I, I don't, I think that's kind of the outside of what it is at this point. It's industrial zone now, so. But we're, we hear the concerns, and I think the sound study's gonna address it.
A lot of zones come together in that particular area. On the map that's presented, it's showing my property as being commercial. My property was zoned residential or rural agricultural back in nineteen ninety-nine. So, quite frankly, his map is not even accurate. Where he's showing industrial and commercial, that puts up to rural agricultural and fillers residential, it's, it's extremely skewed. It's ve, it's extremely not accurate. I didn't have a chance to get into that, Chairman. I didn't think you guys really wanted to, but I can tell you right now, what's being presented to you is not accurate at all.
Thank you, and for the minute here, that was Mr. Jeremy Flensburg. Forgot to get it from you at the beginning. Mr. Benoy, if you can clarify the zones in the area, and what's allowed, what's not allowed, please?
I don't live on commercial property.
He may be referring, Mr. Chairman, what happens off of the property if there's a zone line. Again, we don't, we don't detail what's happening off of our site. We detail what's happening on our site, so.
The next meeting.
Maybe it's five, six years or so ago, that, that, that area where this work, where this work area is going to be was residential. And it was, there was an effort in this town to try to zone, to get industry in here, economic development, and everything that could be rezoned to industrial on the periphery of the town, and so where there was land available was, was rezoned. This was one of them.
Yeah, this land, this land is zoned industrial, and Mr. Flensburg is zoned residential rural. It's the zoning line that goes right down the property line.
But when, but when-
Right down the gas line.
But when was it zoned industrial?
I don't think that's relevant to this meeting.
Yeah.
He's correct. It does go down-
Yeah, Mr. Flensburg. Sorry.
He's correct.
Yep, thank you. All right, thank you. But we, we have stuff to, to research in the meantime, and continues for another meeting. Yeah, sorry, didn't-
No, no problem. All right, who do we all sit or?
Yes, if you just come up just so the mics can hear you, just name an address, please, for the record.
Richard Netter, twenty-one, Bush Street, Duckbridge. I just kind of have a procedural question. So I'm assuming, Mr. McIntyre, I'd like to engage a sound engineer to do a study. I'm assuming any votes you guys take is kind of contingent part of the study. I mean, you guys are gonna wait to get the results of that study before you vote on anything.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So hopefully for next meeting, we can have a, a sound study, and this clearly concerns with sound with this operation, all this stuff. I think a sound study would be sufficient.
Through the chair, Matt, was that any review by the third party?
We should, very likely.
That's the only thing I should do.
Yeah.
I mean, I see Richard in the heads, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, any, any study that we received, I think should be-
Objected.
We've had it done that way before, check, check balance, especially in a situation like this.
Okay. All right, so you have some stuff to work on for, do you think next meeting's gonna be fine?
I would suggest that we schedule it for next meeting, and then we can always move it out. I'm just, I, I'm not sure on the sound study aspect. So on my, what I can control, no problem.
Yeah.
So, but I, I would recommend that we schedule for the next meeting.
And, and I was gonna say the same thing. I don't know where we'll get with the sound study, but I'll, you know, start pressuring the engineer and see how it's going, how we wanna handle that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and even at the next meeting, does an update on anything?
Yeah.
Sure.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing from McIntyre Loom, off legacy circle to Wednesday, June twelfth, it's not, seven fifteen PM.
So moved, second.
Made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Socrate. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Stand for Mr. Gannett. All right, we'll continue until then.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
All right, master plan, additional business.
Would you like to take that?
Sure, I'd love to. I don't know what else to talk about, but let's chat.
Yeah, new schedule.
Yeah, we got a new schedule. It was approved. We did further SWAT discussion, and if you look at the other side of that board, you'll see, how many items do we have now, Michael?
Fifty.
Fifty, sixty? I think so. It was, it was an interesting discussion.
Yes.
And never doubt-
Cubes. You here for cubes? Bob, are you here for cubes? Sorry.
That's okay. No, it's just sort of all the same. We added some SWAT up items. Matt went through the timetable. I think we're have, we're gonna have all the financing in place. Is that correct, Matt?
Yeah.
A total of-
Starting fiscal year, uh, was, yeah, it's a hundred and thirty thousand. Well, a hundred and thirty-five thousand on the contract, but thirty thousand was appropriated at town meeting, and the rest of it would be out for grant funding.
Yeah, I just wanna say Matt's done a wonderful job with that, and we were able to use the old master plan to get a large chunk of that function of monies.
From the past one, how long of a process is it?
Eternal.
Two, three years?
It's a couple of years to do the master plan, ideally, and then, then ideally have a master plan into implementation committee. And the last time, it was nine years. It doesn't have to be that long, but that's where the rubber hits the rubber. Because you take, last time we had seventy, eighty, ninety recommendations, and they went through every single one. And they either implemented it, they dropped it, or they modified it, and that's what made it valuable and useful. So, yeah, I'll take at least two or three, a couple, coupled to do the master plan. It should be about a handful for the implementation committee. But it's, it's a wonderful tool, and it's, anyone who's interested in joining us at a master plan meeting, I think you won't find it dull. It's an interesting crew, and there's lots to talk about, and it's pretty broad and deep in terms of what's included. And we're talking about our town today, and twenty, twenty-five years from now, so.
Twenty thousand.
When, when we're a city.
All right.
Additional business.
Yep, so I'm gonna go down the list. The cubes at Gilberta, Mr. Benoy, anyone?
Sure.
In your packet, you see some sketches provided by Deals and Associates. He's kind of outlined the area that we were asking about, the, the berm and the trees. See it on the third page, kind of shows the plantings and the berm. It's not a stamped plan, it's more of a sketch at this point, but just, we asked about it last meeting, so they wanted to provide it, so we know that it does exist. The, this, this cannot be implemented until National Grid moves a guy wire. But I don't know how that's going with National Grid at this point. Bob, do you want an update on this?
For the record, Bob Manerick, economic development. We've been in negotiations with National Grid for a long time on this, and word we got this week, it might be moved as early as this week.
This week?
Took a while, but.
Wait, can I just ask, where, where is the guy wire that's?
The guy wire is, if you look at drawing C three-
Yeah.
It is that lower right, one isolated red spot. That's a tree, but that's where the guy wire in pole thirty-six dash one is.
Okay.
And the problem is, the pole is on town property. However, the guy wire extends two feet into KTKT property. And Mr. McIntyre does not want any easements on his property. So we propose to have two guy wires at an angle, because you, you still need that distance. And if you move the guy wire in, you would not have the, the distance to hold back a pole. So they've designed two guy wires, and that's been in engineering since December twenty-first. So we finally got word this week that the anchors are in, and it might be done. That was one of the conditions, as Mr. Benoy said, for Mr. McIntyre to sign off on this plan.
Okay. Mr. Benoy, any comment on it, or?
No, I think, I think this, this really does address the issue that the berm was removed, and other plant trees that were taken down, this overplants. I mean, this is, this is a great screen for those abutters along the Grove. I think this is a really good plan.
The net effect is fifteen trees were removed. I believe thirty are being put back in. So there's a net gain of fifteen trees.
You know what they're proposing for trees?
On the top of the berm, those little black dots, those are ten, twelve to fifteen-foot mature arborvitae. There's different varieties of arborvitae, some with a wide skirt, some with a narrow skirt. I don't know the type of arborvitae, but it will be a tall, mature tree. And then there's your deciduous along the street.
Okay.
Yeah, no pines, please.
I think it's great getting back, at least step off of, to take those poor neighbors up there.
Yep.
Through the chair, appreciate all the hard work on it. You got something back?
You looking for them to make a motion of effect?
I don't know if we really need to approve this, but this is before you right now. I'm, I'm not familiar with your procedures as a board. There are two approvals we need outside of the board, is one is obviously Tom McIntyre to sign off for it, because he's the owner of the property, and he won't sign off it until National Grid moves the guy wire, the anchor guy wire combo. But if you approve this plan, I-
May I jump in real quick? Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Tom McIntyre, KTKT LLC. I have looked at this plan. I generally approve it. Again, it was just the guy wire was something that was not put there with any authorization, and that I just, this is the only way I can get it removed in my mind. It never should've gone in in the first place, and that's the only way I, so. This plan has my full support. I haven't physically signed it yet, but with, although I have one question. Yeah, Bob's worked very hard on this, and he and I have gone over this and walked the site, and this plan meets my satisfaction as to what's happening on KTKT LLC property.
It seems like we just gotta get that guy wire moved.
Yeah.
You could even make it a condition.
Well, I don't know if it's the formal, whether or not it's a formal plan.
Be a minor change.
Yeah.
Because it's different than the original. I consider it a minor, and until I agree with the guidelines, I know you don't want them where you don't want them.
I'm just gonna go to Mr. Netter from the audience. I saw you had a hand up for this.
Uh, yeah, Richard Netter, twenty-one, Bush Street, Duckbridge. Just two kind of questions on the plan. The first is, the tree, the plantings along the berm along West Hartford Ave. Is it possible to stipulate, I looked at the planting schedule, and it looks like the, Mr. Manerick said they're all the city, is, is it possible to mix in some conifers, just so during the winter, when we walk out?
All them, all arborvitae?
Well, just thinking ahead, a number of years, you know, arborvitae's, how long of, I don't know a lot about arborvitae, but I've seen some that get planted, the deer come up and eat the bottom six feet out of it. You know, how long are those gonna last versus, you know, the plantings along the street, those could be there for a hundred years. Will those arborvitae's last twenty, thirty years? You know, do they, do they max out at a certain height? Just kind of a question on that, just to make it more of a long-lasting shield.
If I can through the chair, I know on Central Turnpike heading towards North Baskett on the right-hand side, if you take a look at some, they're over thirty feet tall, and you can't see nothing. They're as thick as thick can be. And where I live in the city, our neighbor had them behind us. You ain't seeing nothing through anything, yeah, well.
Okay.
I know what I'm saying about the deer, but I mean, that's, they might, they might not, I, I don't know.
Ah, okay. So my other question, what's specific to the arborvitae's plan is, I don't wanna say generic, but they don't really list what species or what variety of arborvitae. I don't know if there's any, can be any stipulations or clarification put on the map for that. I mean, I know I have, like, green giant arborvitae. I don't know if they're new, familiar. They're pretty, pretty bushy, they get pretty tall. I know there's other varieties, like steeplechase, that tend to be more compact and tall. I just didn't know if there was a way to put some more detail there, just so that, you know.
Do you have a preference of a tree, of an arborvitae type?
Uh, I mean, I'm not an arborist, but like, I have the green giant, they're deer-resistant. They tend to get more bushy and tall and not compact. There may be other varieties that are better. I just, I guess my point on those is, I would hate to go have Mr. Manerick go do all this, and then they pop in some steeplechase once, and it's like, oh, you know. They're ten feet apart, and they're this wide, and you know, there's big gaps between.
And they bury them.
Through the chair, you noted that it's twelve to fifteen-foot height. These trees were massive trees. Right, I don't know about the width, but they start out pretty mature.
Yeah, yeah. And just to, just to give you an idea, I mean, I did work with Mr. Manerick. I kind of, using some reference points down the street, figured out how tall those trees would have to be, or how tie the, how high the berm and tree combination would have to be to just shield the warehouse, and it was about, it was around thirty feet. So, the screen out of the box will give us about, I think, checking if I'm wrong, Mr. Manerick, I think this, the berm was eight to twelve, plus the trees, so theoretically, pretty good screen.
Could get, yeah, you're getting that, yeah.
Good start, good start. So like I said, it's more just, I'm not trying to add ad complexity. I just hate to go through all this, and then pop in some steeplecheses or something, and, you know, it is kind of, there's big gaps involved.
Okay. Through the chair, can our request be made to use more deer-resistant arborvitae?
Of course. We definitely pass that information on. I'm, this is not my field.
Yeah, mine neither, but I didn't know there was some-
Maybe Aaron who owns a farm.
I'll tell you about apple trees.
Apple trees.
Yeah.
For the chair.
Yeah, it's not gonna screw-
That'll bring the deer.
Won't, won't there be a landscaping firm who will be maintaining all of this anyway?
It's part of their own-
That's a good question, I assume.
It's part of their operation and maintenance plan. Once the building's constructed, they have, they will have someone on site.
So they'll need to maintain these arborvitae's and these trees to make sure that they do grow and do what they're supposed to do, I would imagine.
Yeah, they do have an O and M plan submitted with their-
Um, just to, not to throw them off your mission, but, so that being not CRG's land, Mr. McIntyre's land, would, would CRG still be responsible for the maintenance of those trees?
Good question, Tom.
That was one of my conditions on approving it, is that I'm not responsible for the, the tree maintenance. You know, they can put the trees on my land in accordance with this plan, but that's on CRG, and I guess they have a license, so are the landscapers, to come on and, you know, ensure the trees are healthy and clean up the leaves, do whatever they need to do in terms of landscaping.
Mr. Benoy, can we confirm just the landscape and plan for the CRG, and make sure this is included in it?
Sure.
Okay.
Confirm. Go M plan. Cool, it's landscape.
There is a warranty period on, through the chair, there is a warranty period on all these plantings. If you noticed on Tri Valley, the, the Triton Warehouse, they've had a lot of issues with trees, and they're forced to replant them.
Anything else, Mr. Manerick?
No, that's it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else with this, Mr. Manerick?
No, I'm, if you have no, no questions.
How's everything going? I, I would say, how?
It's been- It's been busy.
Yeah.
It's been busy. This was a little site project.
Yeah. Everything good conservation wise at the site?
We're working on that. They're doing infiltration tests tomorrow, I believe, at 8 o'clock. So if you're around, we'll have a grandstand set up, hot dog stand.
Thank you for the update. Thank you for the project.
I thought it was the master plan committee. Half this table is the committee.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Having some juggle on.
Thank you again.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right. Legacy circle, we've been talking about that. BW Solar Oak Street.
Well, we want to talk about the legacy circle piece real quick because Aaron brought it up earlier today. When we approved the.
Paul, that is part of.
Yeah, the plantings out in front, they have, they are yet to do those. Those arborvitae have not been planted yet. They also have not done any of the work or removal of dead trees in the, in the maintenance area. So I sent an email out just asking for status update and hopefully we'll have something for next meeting.
If I may speak to that, just because I went out, I mean, I had to turn around and go back and take a picture. They have, these are the, I guess they're leasing these or rent these out. This is part of their business, these pallet things.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, the point is, it looks like they have been put in the place that the plantings would be.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're right up, pretty close to the property line, planting line. And, I mean, it's kind of like the horse, but, you know, it's out of the barn or something, one's done before the other.
Right.
And that's all, that's, the question is out there because we'd like to see the screening because even Mr. Plansbury probably brought it up before that you could see these things, you know? And that it looks tough. I mean, it is industrial zone, but it's still one of them.
And with, too, we had a dust control measure with that site, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah. We're just looking, just, yeah, make sure that they're working towards bringing that to what we discussed two meetings ago.
Okay.
And following the plans.
Thank you.
I recuse. Yes, recuse. I see we have Mr. Moorehouse on, so we'll start with you, Mr. Menoy, anything we want to?
Yeah, so, talking with Blue Wave today, I told them that they really didn't have to be here for the meeting, but just some of the updates from our site walk today. The Wick drain in Basin 5 will be finished tomorrow. Installing the valve on the Wick drain at Basin 1 will also be finished tomorrow. These are the items that we said are conditional prior to them moving to Phase 4. Outlets in the new permanent sediment basins at the end of the week. Cleanup of the Sutton wetlands, if not done this week, will be done Tuesday. That's a Sutton item, obviously. But they did lowman seed the entire slope of Basin 1. They brought that back to its finished grade without lowman seed in the bottom, of course. And they, they put in the outlet emergency spillway of the temporary basin up in the front that we asked them to. And they've been maintaining the entrance. They took out the yellow tracking pad and they replaced that with, with stone. But they doubled up on the tracking pad up above, the metal one that we asked them to put in, they doubled up on that. And so there's a little bit more opportunity for silt from the tires to wash on that and then the stones before they get to the roadway for trucks exiting the site. I think that was a pretty smart move. But that's really, that's really it for updates. They haven't moved to Phase 4 yet. I think they're waiting for us to, for our peer review consultant who was with me today on site to provide a letter saying that these items are finished. And it looks like they'll be wrapping those up by next meeting on Wednesday.
Mr. Moore, do you have anything you want to add? I don't want to put you on the spot, but I see you there.
Nope, I think Matt pretty much nailed it.
Okay. All right. Keep getting updates and keep passing along as they come in and.
Will do.
All right. Mrs. Wicker can come back. We're going to move along. Any other of these we have updates for?
Yeah, so White and Reservoir Estates. I reached out to the developer because I visited the site and noticed that the basins have not, has not been maintained at all since it probably, since it was built. I mean, there's this massive growth coming out of it. And if these things want to get accepted at town meeting, they have to be cleaned and maintained and silt taken out of the basin, returned to finished grade and stuff. So he wanted to schedule a walk with me this week and I talked to his engineer about it. He also wanted to get our peer review consultant out there. We're not going to get him out there until we pay for the peer review. So anyway, there's just a back and forth going in there between the developer and I. I think he wants me to get, get out there on site and provide any and all comments that I have, but the peer review consultant's going to have more comments about the as-built plan than I. He's coming from New Hampshire, he wants to get this all in one trip. But I don't think he's going to get it all from me in the one trip.
Yeah.
It's just, I'm not the peer review consultant reviewing the as-built plan. So there's far more than just the detention basin maintenance of the site. So I'm trying to work with him to get this resolved because that thing is not functioning as designed at all. I don't know if it's washing anyone out or not, but it's, it's just not.
I think that's something that his engineer can relate to him too.
Right.
So, like you all said.
Yeah, he can come back.
Yeah.
We're talking about waiting heights.
Quick discussion.
They need to.
So he's, he wants our third party there for it.
I want our third party.
Yeah.
And I, he just asked, his latest communication came today, was he just wants to talk more about it. And so I'll see what that, see what that means.
Well, same time, if they're, kind of requested a town meeting, their party's going to have to be there anyways.
Right.
I think their engineer can work with them and tell them they need to get this spread away.
Right.
It's, rather work a little bit now throughout it than have a huge list of.
I mean, he should maintain it now so it can function throughout the summer and then have the peer review consultant come out in September where they maintain it again and then do their as-built review and submit that with the October deadline for the spring acceptance in 2025. That's, that's usually how this goes. But we'll see how, see what he wants to do.
Anything else? It's on Doug, have they started?
The selectmen will be voting at their next meeting, I think next week, to, I believe, accept the land, the open space. And that's the contingent they need before they can get started. The first thing they'll do is they'll schedule a pre-construction meeting with myself and building commissioner, if he's back by then, and kind of the tech review. We'll go over their pre-construction items and what they plan on doing, get their phasing plan and go from there. But they need that land transferred, it's part of the condition of approval.
Have you heard from ASD Wallen Solar?
I did. So I drove through there and I noticed that there's a lot of washout of their access roads, a ton. I mean, I was kind of nervous driving on it myself, actually, and I have a four-wheel drive truck, so, a little concerned about that. So I reached out to them and asked them when they're going to do some O and M. I don't know if it's been done. They replied right away and said, we'll get someone on this, but I don't know if it's been done, I haven't been out there since. Every time I go, the gate's locked, so they can't get in.
Oh, we have an access to the gate?
I think the fire department does.
I would, then in the future, if I came to the chair, any of these sites where we're still involved and maintaining them, each match should have access to these sites. We should not be locked out. I understand.
Or at least the building department, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there should be, if there's still issues and we're still on the, not maintenance, but oversight deal of it.
Yeah.
How can we be locked out?
Through the chair, I thought that was part of the standard boilerplate, that the planning board was allowed access to the site. We just had to check in with the superintendent or whoever.
Yeah, we had to give them, I think, 48 hours notice.
Yeah, so.
But I was just, I was just driving by.
Okay, so it's, so it's secured now because it's already there.
Right.
It's not like going to under construction, so.
Right.
Yeah, I guess that's different.
Or would you prefer to have access to the gate?
I don't think it was conditioned that way, but.
It was, I'm not saying moving forward, I mean, this is things that we're coming across.
Yeah.
Better thing about the future.
I just, I got lucky one day, I drove by and there were folks at the battery, so I went in and I, I took some pictures and I was like, wow, this access road is actually growing grass out of it. Like, that's not supposed to happen.
Yeah, do you want to try to get a follow-up on them about what they've done and see if you can get, if, yeah, see if you can get access and do a full inspection of it.
Okay. I did, I did reach out to Carol Gogolinski for Gilboa Court Extension. Her definitive subdivision extension expired recently.
Oh.
So I think she needs to refile her plans for that, but the roads, I mean, in, they just need to get their lots released, but I believe, I believe most of it's expired, unfortunately.
That's been three years.
It's been a little while, yeah. But the order conditions, they need to submit their certificate of compliance for that. They could still do that even though their orders expired, the work was done within the window, they just haven't submitted the close out for it, so they still need to do that. So I let her know about that. Evergreen Estates, which is Thomas Circle off of South Street. I talked to the developer today, told him that his, all of his approvals along expired, including his order conditions. That stuff's long gone. All of his flagging for his lots and all that stuff. So he's putting together a new definitive package and a flexible development special permit. It would likely include more duplexes. It's going to include probably, what did he say, 17 with one single family home? Because that's to be a combination thereof and however you do that, it has to be one. But, you know, that's, that's kind of housing that this town needs. We need that style housing. And it's, I think he's aiming for it to be a 55-plus community, which is, which is high demand in this town, obviously. So I'm looking forward to his application when it comes in, but we'll see, we'll see what it comes.
Okay. Any updates besides what we talked about?
None others. Oh, we do have the decision to sign for the extension that we granted at our last meeting.
Okay.
We just signed it.
And we don't have any minutes for this meeting?
We do not.
All right.
Did you bring out, do you want money for bounds? Do we need to talk about this?
Yeah, so.
This got brought up at that, at our meeting.
Yeah, so open section topics, not reasonably anticipated, I'm sorry. So we had a budget for monument bounds for a lot of our old subdivisions that never got bounds in them. And when I tried getting an estimate to continue the bounds and conservation drive, because there were still four more that were outside of the cost that we had, I was told that we don't have a budget for that anymore. Mike's under the opinion that there was a town meeting vote that it was a continuous article that would be replenished in the account. That doesn't seem to be the case. So I need to get to the bottom of that with our town accountant, check on the motion. I don't know when that town meeting was.
It wasn't that long ago.
Had to be.
I was saying, we were outside, I think, when we were having them up at school during COVID, was when that went through.
Okay, so 2020.
It was an outside meeting, I know that. I'm damn sure that's when that went through because we're really pushing to have this stuff done.
It's a town meeting in 2020, probably. Okay.
If, maybe the next meeting, just like a quick update of what projects are outstanding on it.
Oh, there's a ton.
There's a ton.
Yeah.
Oh, this goes back to Bill.
Oh, yeah.
And there was a whole list.
Yeah, I have that book in my office.
So there is a pile of, and we're doing pretty good there for a while.
Yep.
We're really hitting them. And some reason last Wednesday I thought of it when we were at the master plan meeting here. Oh, by the way.
Yeah.
We got no more funds.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so let's try to confirm it and if not, try to ask for it.
And we need to get it where it's continual until these all get done.
Right.
Through the chair, does Select would have any funding powers that they can approve?
This has to go through a meeting.
It has to go through town meeting.
So you could, the community development department could request funding.
Yes.
And it would, it still has to go to town meeting.
Right, so it's, so what it was is, I think our first budget was short money, but it asked for a whole lot. We realized we should be asking for more. And then we bumped it up to 18,000.
I think we had 15.
It was like 10.
Yeah.
So we bumped it to like 18, so we could really get moving on it and all that. The more they did, the more they'd do for a cheaper price.
Mm-hmm.
When they went in to do a few, obviously the cost was more for the man hours. So we increased it all for that meeting and everybody said, no problem. But I know that was for a continual deal until these were done.
Yeah. But even every year, FinCon and Select then approve the budget and town meeting approves it. So there can always be a switch in or cutting a line here or there, so.
Yeah, but when it's a voted, that was voted on by the people, you keep it going.
Right, if it's a separate article.
How do you go and just remove it without telling anybody that you've removed it? But I don't understand.